23. We do not have any ordinances for first reading or ordinances for amendment. We do have two ordinances for final passage, Bill one of two thousand and twenty-three and Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three. Council members for Bill three, we will suspend the rules for discussion and then vote. We will also vote on Bill one. We'll move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Next, Resolution two of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Then Resolution five of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution six of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution seven of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon, and Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-three, which we will vote upon. Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Public Works Committee. Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution twelve of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution fourteen of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution fifteen of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution sixteen of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. And the final resolution for consideration is Resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three, which will move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. Everybody ready to begin? Okay, it's six oh four P M. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mister Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mister Lawson.
Here.
Mister Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mister Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you.
You're welcome.
The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. Um, if we could just take a moment um to keep in our hearts and our thoughts of anyone who has lost anybody recently or anyone who's going through um some hardships, if we could take a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Majors. Councilman Majors?
Thank you. We all stand for pledge.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. For communications this evening, we've invited Mister David Morrison to share a presentation on the fiftieth anniversary of the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated. Mister Morrison?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and members of City Council for this opportunity uh to invite you to join us in celebrating fifty years of historic preservation, urban revitalization, and smart growth. Historic Harrisburg was founded in nineteen seventy-three. There's lots of information in your handout, which you could look at later. Uh, but I want to especially call your attention to this invitation. We have two events coming up this month, which which some of you have already said you will be joining us, and others, I want you to know that you're most cordially invited as our guests. We're having a uh a media event on Wednesday, February twenty-second, which is our actual birthday. Uh, at both of these events are Historic Harrisburg building at Third and Burbank. And that'll be at twelve noon, and we're gonna be awarding uh cash prizes to high school students who entered an essay contest, which we conducted, where the topic is called Preserving the Past, uh shaping the Future. Kind of what our organization is about, so we asked the high school kids to talk about that same subject. And then on Monday, the twenty-seventh, we'll have a program and a birthday celebration also at our building at six o'clock. Uh, and that will will review some of the highlights of historic preservation over the last fifty years. Plus, we're gonna have it start with a champagne toast and conclude with a birthday cake, so you're invited to join us for that uh as well. Um, I I want to mention also uh that uh in your handout is is the most recent version of our Harrisburg Heritage Magazine, and that uh really is not just about organization, but it's about our uh community and really the heritage of Harrisburg, which we work hard to preserve and to project to the community. Um, some of the other handouts tell you a little bit more about things that we do. Our ongoing calendar for the year is in there. Uh, and also, I want to especially mention this document. Our twenty twenty-three Old House Resource Directive. This company has provided for a number of years. We give this out free of charge, and it really
Is it's an encyclopedia encyclopedia of what people need to know when they're buying or restoring an old house in Harrisburg, so it's been very helpful. And some of the staff here in City Hall were were extremely helpful in helping us to compile all this information, and we hope to keep it up to date and make changes as need be. So if you see anything missing or that you want to, you want us to to expand on, we'd welcome input at any time from council uh or its committees. Um, I also want to uh just very quickly uh mention some of the exhibits which we have had recently, uh which again celebrate Harrisburg's history, not just our organization. Uh, earlier in nineteen or twenty twenty-two, we celebrated the fiftieth anniversary of Hurricane Agnes, which was so
Mister Morrison, are you able to come back to the microphone, just so everybody can hear you? I apologize for the interruption.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
This 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 was an exhibit we did in June of of last year for the fiftieth anniversary of Hurricane Agnes. That devastation really was one of the main things that prompted the formation of Historic Harrisburg a few months later. This is another from the flood exhibit, and you can see the governor's mansion completely surrounded by the Susquehanna River uh in June of nineteen seventy-two. The water was was up uh just above the piano keys on the first floor of the building, so about three feet on the first floor. We then did an exhibit uh later in two thousand and twenty-two called Remembering Harrisburg's Vanished African-American Neighborhoods. And our historians, uh Jeb Stuart and Caleb Jackson, worked on tracing so much of the Old Eighth Ward and a lot of the Seventh Ward, which is not there anymore. So these are, these are pictures of the buildings that used to be there, of the people that lived there, the businesses were there. That exhibit is still up. In fact, I'm gonna put these back up tonight. In addition, this exhibit will travel to the to the Civic Club uh on Friday for Third and the Burg. They're having a big uh uh Black History Month celebration, so we, these exhibits are very portable and we can move them around. Here's another uh one showing map and buildings of the Old Eighth Ward, all the buildings behind the Capitol that are no longer there. It's just amazing how it's changed, and this exhibit helps to preserve that heritage from disappearing forever. So the buildings are gone, but the but the stories and the pictures and and the evidence of of the remains. Here's my favorite one. The Potter Hotel, which once stood at twelve hundred Wallace Street uh in the Seventh Ward, and uh when when the president I'm sorry, when this, when 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 uh, when President Bowers came to our opening ceremony, she said, uh Daniel Potter was my great-grandfather. So we're really very intrigued at the at the close connections that many people have to Harrisburg's. Exhibit on Harrisburg's merchant heritage and the legacy of Mary Sacks, the Mary Sacks store that was world famous, and uh Mamie Eisenhower and lots of uh prominent women shopped there. That really put Harrisburg downtown on the map as a major destination for retail activity. So this, here here's a picture of of pomeroy's as it as it was in its heyday with with crowds on the sidewalk. Did you ever know that pomeroy's used to look like that before it was remodeled? That was an old building with lots of old early twentieth century gingerbread, so our archivists and and exhibit makers put together things that people would not otherwise know about. And the last ones I'm gonna show you, uh a couple of years ago, we did an exhibit, or actually, this was, this was called the Race Against Racism that the Y M C A, Y W C A conducts every year, and they asked us to put together a special race course that that took people past a lot of the places of Harrisburg's African-American heritage. So uh, for example, you're familiar with the Green Book. Harrisburg had a lot of places that were in the Green Book uh back in the thirties and forties, uh when those places were were imperative for for traveling uh African-Americans, and some of them uh were right in the neighborhood of the Seventh Ward. Uh, and here's, here is a building that's being restored now, the Hudson Building at um at uh Sixth and McClay. You know it is a two-story building. This was the architect's design for a high-rise that was never built. So, but it's now being restored as a beautiful his historic building after being vacant for probably twenty or thirty years. So this is the kind of thing that we encourage, and I must say that a lot of what we do wouldn't be possible without great cooperation uh from city government, uh many different departments here we work with and the Architectural Review Board, city council when we need to, and we we just want to uh project and and continue that great working relationship. Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for this time, and please come to our anniversary parties. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation and for your presence this evening. We do have something for you before you leave. We know your official birthday isn't until next week. So we do have a proclamation we'd like to present. Take a picture before you leave, and just so if you'd indulge me for a few minutes.
Wonderful.
The City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrisburg applauds the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated for their dedicated service to the greater Harrisburg area for fifty years. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated is a five oh one C three nonprofit charitable and educational organization that advocates for the restoration, preservation, and proper stewardship of historic neighborhoods and landmarks throughout the capital region to enable current and future generations to retain and celebrate Harrisburg's rich history. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated carries out their mission to promote historic preservation, urban revitalization, and smart growth. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated provides advocacy related to historic preservation for urban revitalization, economic development, neighborhood improvement, and tourism. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated hosts a series of educational opportunities for residents of the City of Harrisburg to learn about historic preservation. Such events include Candle Lighthouse Tours, Seventh Ward and Old Eighth Ward, African-American history landmark tours, the Underground Railroad in Harrisburg, annual annual preservation celebrations, annual preservation priority list, and the Fourth Monday Program. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated operates the Historic Harrisburg Resource Center, where history throughout the City of Harrisburg is brought to life through various exhibits. The Historic Harrisburg Resource Center was established in 1993 to serve as a community resource and an architectural landmark. And whereas the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated has remained relevant over the past 50 years and continues to flourish while achieving their mission to ensure Harrisburg's historic districts and architectural landmarks are preserved for future generations. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends the Historic Harrisburg Association Incorporated for their dedication to historic preservation and urban revitalization. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful 50th anniversary celebration. Signed and attested in the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. If you don't mind, I'd like to pause one moment for a photo with Mr. Morrison and all the council members. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morrison, for your presentation. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes. If you could please state your name and address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. And I will begin. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my far right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Good evening. Everyone, um, my name's Jeffrey Hill. I'm a resident of Harrisburg, Swatara Street. And I just want to say on behalf of my family, the Hill family, the Fountain family, the Barbie family, the Mays family, the Fordoms, the Crummels, all of my descendants and relatives around the country who enjoyed, embraced, and are so proud of what this city council did for my mother, Judith Hill, who was the first black female on city council. Warms the heart of all my relatives that this city council and this city provided a street name that will live now, hopefully forever. Can't say enough for the Honorable Daniel Bowers, President, who I know worked hard, Brother Wes Majors, who helped with her portrait, my good friend Brother Parker, who did what he could do, and the relatives of Jocelyn Rawls and Brother Rodriguez down there, who has always been supportive of us. So I'm just here to thank you, City Council, for all the work that you do and what you've done. We're forever grateful. All right? That's the first thing. Second thing is, I live on Swatara Street, and people drive down that street like maniacs. I would like to know what the process is. Get a speed bump or something like that between 24th and 22nd Street, because it's criminal the way they come down that street. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, if you wouldn't mind staying just a few minutes after the meeting to talk to Councilman Lawson and myself and see what, how we can help. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. Laura Harding, Third and Emerald Street. I'd first like to thank Councilmen Majors for responding to my email today regarding the requested review of our city code to protect residents from retaliation from landlords. I appreciate the response. It's one of the few responses I've received when I sent an email to City Council, so I really appreciate it. Additionally, I'd like to comment about Bill 3 to 2023. I'd like to point out, I object to Wild Heart Ministries receiving this grant due to the fact that it's their private residence for one thing. But in addition to that, per HUD's guidelines, a grantee must develop and follow a detailed plan which provides for and encourages citizen participation and which emphasizes participation by persons of lower moderate income, particularly residents of predominantly low and moderate income neighborhoods. They have the plan, they must also develop a plan, and that must provide citizens with reasonable and timely access to local meetings, information and records related to the grantees' proposed and actual use of funds, provide for public hearings to obtain citizen views, and to respond to proposals and questions at all stages of the community development program, including at least the development of needs, the review of proposed activities, and review of a program performance. As far as I know, Wild Heart does not participate with the local community ever. I have reached out to them before. They don't respond. They don't come to meetings when they're invited to come. Nobody really knows what they do. And as far as anybody can tell, the only people they serve are members of Life Center Church. In addition, since I know that at least a couple of the council members are involved with Wild Heart Ministries, I would like to remind them of the Ethics Commission guidelines, which says that "Any public official or public employee who in the discharge of his official duties would be required to vote on a matter that would result in a conflict of interest shall abstain from voting and prior to the vote being taken publicly announce and disclose the nature of his interest as a public record in a written memorandum filed with the person responsible for recording the minutes of the meeting at which the vote is taken." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Pamela Parsons, Holly Street, Allison Hill. Good evening, Council, on this birthday anniversary of Frederick Douglass. I'm speaking to you tonight about the first two bills for passage, which concern the allegation, the allocation of block grant financing. These funds come to our city, to our community, which includes people who live in poverty. And they are designed to assist our community with providing the means for everyone to thrive, particularly folks with low and moderate incomes. Poverty is not a personal moral, moral failure, but rather a systemic failure, and these are designed to help us with that. In the nearly 50 years of block grant funding, Harrisburg has a record of questionable and unethical uses of these funds and ways in which they have not benefited the people they were designed to help. The most egregious of those, I will remind you, is the development of City Island and the Senators' baseball field. I hope you'll think about the, carefully about the ethics of fixing a parking lot and a fence in a relatively new building in repairing a fire escape on a mansion that is a primary residence. And think about, how does that benefit the people in our community who have low and moderate incomes? I would remind you that poverty, the opposite of poverty is not wealth. The opposite of poverty is justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Louis Butts, uptown. Happy Valentine's Day, President and Councilman. History is very important. I actually played Jacob Compton for the past players for Harrisburg. And preserving history takes generations. Sometimes other generations don't realize what is, what needs to be uncovered. The Camp Curtain Church is a very important relic of Harrisburg. It represents the winning of the Civil War. It represents freedom that people thought we wouldn't have. But since we have so much freedom, it's very important that the next generation preserves elements of the past and don't let, allow things to deter our children from learning the history that's going to propel and protect us in the future. Camp Curtain represents the North. We are the winners. Harrisburg represents the winning of the Civil War. My name is Butts, Louis Butts, and I want to resurrect the flags of the war, bring out what we actually won. We were able to fly hundreds of flags from regiments that were mustered in and mustered out of Camp Curtain. It's important that the nation understands the impact of flying these flags. And I want council, as well as the public, to know that having a historic district that this council can present to the people will actually increase our property value in our district and add a lot more money to our reservoirs to protect and provide resources for our people. The Camp Curtain Church represent more than just a building, but it was a functional entity. It enabled, Ms. Hill actually was a member of Camp Curtain. These people that are relics and, and and pillars in our society were built and represented our community, and they did it well. Judith Hill was a fantastic woman. We had many conversations. But it's important for our generation to make sure our, the future is better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes. These are the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on January 25th, 2023. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear this evening, I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of February 7th, 2023. On Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, the Administration Committee met to discuss six resolutions. Please note, Resolution 4 of 2023 was removed from the meeting agenda. The first resolution for discussion was Resolution 1 of 2023, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering Incorporated to provide consulting services to assist with the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application and business plan. Mr. Percy Bullock, Project Manager, and Mrs. Marita Kelly, Director of the Finance Department, were present on behalf of the Administration to discuss the resolution. Mrs. Kelly explained that the resolution deals with the redevelopment assistance capital program grant, or RCAP, granted to the City of Harrisburg through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Office of Bu, of the Budget for a total of $12, $12 million. $6 million for the city and a match of $6 million for improvements to F and B Field. Services the firm will be providing include preparation for the RCAP application and the business and strategic plan. Dawood Engineering will be supervised by the city engineer. Twenty, there are 22 pieces to the application, and then the business plan must follow. The application is due May 14th of 2023. There was a typo identified on the first page of the resolution. Mrs. Kelly shared that an RFP was issued in December of 2022. Five firms responded. Dawood was selected. And she was careful to note that this was completely separate from their other work with the City of Harrisburg. Council members asked questions regarding why a RCAP specialist was needed, where can residents find a list of businesses that submitted bids, and what were the final products on the project. The second resolution for discussion was Resolution 2 of 2023, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halseyon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services. I explained that we are extending the professional services agreement with Halseyon Interpreting Services LLC for the 2023 fiscal year for American Sign Language interpreting that occurs during our legislative sessions. City Solicitor Mr. Neil Grover shared that one distinction from last year's resolution is that this resolution allows the council to extend the contract if there is an appropriation available, as long as the material terms remain the same. The final two resolutions, Resolution 5 of 2023 and Resolution 6 of 2023, were discussed simultaneously. Resolution 5, a resolution reappointing Mr. Dan A. Schudler, Esquire, to serve on the License and Tax Appeal Board. And Resolution 6 of 2023, a resolution reappointing Ms. Evelyn Hunt to serve on the License and Tax Appeal Board. Mr. Mike Hughes, Tax Administrator, was present on behalf of the Administration along with Ms. Evelyn Hunt to discuss the two reappointments to the License and Tax Appeal Board. The License and Tax Appeal Board responsibilities were shared. The License and Tax Appeal Board was established to hear appeals relating to the issuance of licenses or the imposition of taxes. other than real estate taxes, including requests for refunds of such taxes, license fees, interest, or penalties paid to the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Mike Hughes shared an overview of Mr. Dan A. Schudler's bio and previous service to the License and Tax Appeal Board. Mr. Schudler is approaching his fourth term on the board. He is an attorney with Cozen O'Connor specializing in tax law. Ms. Evelyn Hunt was present to share her bio and previous service to the License and Tax Appeal Board. Ms. Hunt is approaching her third term on the board. She is a lifelong resident of the City of Harrisburg and a retiree of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with 36 years of experience. Council members asked questions regarding caseload, how often the board meets, the number of appeals annually, conflicts, areas of improvement, role of the board, and what qualities each appointee brings to the board. Ms. Hunt responded that the board terms are three years. The board has met twice over the past six years. Two hearings have been held, one pending in court, and one has been resolved. Mr. Hughes shared that there have been two big cases in the last eight years. There, there have been no large cases since 2022, and there are no known conflicts for each appointee. The board is diverse and professional. I recommend my colleagues support of Resolution 1 of 2023, Resolution 2 of 2023, Resolution 5 of 2023, and Resolution 6 of 2023. Resolution 1 of 2023 will provide funding to make improvements to F and B Field for residents and members of the public. Resolution 2 of 2023 will allow Harrisburg City Council to continue to provide sign language interpreting during our legislative sessions, which allows us to be more inclusive in our outreach. And Resolution 5 of 2023 and Resolution 6 of 2023 will allow the License and Tax Appeals Board to resume their work to hear appeals. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Majors on behalf of the Building and Housing Committee on the work session of February 7th, 2023. Chair Majors?
Excuse me. Thank you, President Bowers. On February 7th, the Building and Housing Committee met for two items. The first was, we received a quarterly update from our Director of IT, Steve Portner, on the goings on of the IT department. He was happy, and we're all happy to report that all of the positions within the Bureau have been filled. So we now have a GIS Coordinator, a Help Desk Officer, as well as a Deputy Director, all of which will be assisting Mr. Portner and ensuring the IT services within the city are all being able to meet the needs of city employees and the public. He noted that the water damage that occurred to the building did lead to damage to the city's backup server, the tapes. We have 60 tapes there, but 12 were damaged. The news is because we're in the middle of our IT migration that there are, all of the data has been backed up to the backup servers that our vendor has provided with respect to our migration away from our old database to a cloud-based database. Mr. Portner noted that the migration is going well and listed out the dates for different departments to continue to move through this migration. He believes that we are on track to complete the migration in the end of, by the end of 2024, he noted. And we want to applaud all the work of all the city employees that have been assisting in this migration. And he noted that there are 35 employees that have been working on this migration over, with over a total of 3,000 hours dedicated to, towards updating the system and moving our city into the 21st century with respect to our IT. Next, we had one ordinance for review, which was Bill 1 of 2023, an ordinance appropriating emergency solution grants, program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2022, and authorizing expenditure of such funds. Director Hill provided us with a brief overview of the program, and then we heard from each of the applicants that are looking to receive funds from our ESG. She noted that we have, our, the city continues to be oversubscribed into a number of applicants. So they go through a formula when they are looking at each applicant that applies to ensure that they meet the grade. And since we do not have enough funds to give each applicant what they have requested, we look to divide it evenly amongst those that have met the threshold for approval by the federal government. So those individual organizations that are seeking to be funded through ESG include the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness, the Salvation Army, Christian Churches United, Shalom House, YWCA Greater Harrisburg, and Tears for Tarena. In total, we are looking to appropriate $186,938 of ESG funds, and that also includes a small portion for the administration, for Granite Administration through the Department of Building and Housing. The applicants present did provide us with a brief overview of the projects that are going to be included in the ESG funds. During this conversation, we also heard from those that are looking to do CDBG projects that have funded in both areas. So Chair Daniels will handle the CDBG side. But for those organizations that came before us, the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness is looking to do use funds for the continuum of care and additional case management services for the homeless populations or unhoused populations within the City of Harrisburg that they serve. We heard from the Salvation Army, which is using the portion on the ESG side for their homeless prevention initiative. They noted that they have served 50 to 75 individual households in a class and provided assistance with emergency rental assistance. Christian Churches United uses their funds as, for their hub to help with rapid intake and focus on case management for women and families with children. Harrisburg, and they noted that they have been, they have been very connected to the Capitol, to the county's emergency rental assistance program in the past. The Shalom House is looking to provide wraparound services and utility assistance to women in recovery and those, and women that are in need of additional and rapid housing and wraparound services. The YWCA will use a portion of their funds, coupled with funds that they do receive from the county for their facility to help unhoused women and children within the City of Harrisburg. And Tears for Tarena is looking to use their funds for a safe house for women that are victims of domestic violence. With that, I would encourage my colleagues to support the recommendations included in Bill 1 of 2023. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, excuse me, President Bowers.
Thank you, Chair Majors. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Daniels on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee on the work session of February 7th, 2023. Chair Daniels?
Thank you. On February 7th, the Community and Economic Development Committee met to discuss Bill Number 3, which is of the ordinance appropriating community development block rent program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2022. During the meeting, we had a discussion about the allocation of the CDBG funds. CDBG funds are funds that are designed to prevent individuals from falling into homelessness, taking them out of homelessness, and then supporting them so that they can stay, stay housed after they acquire housing. The categories that CDBG funds allow us to appropriate to are very distinct and precise. So the initial administration's recommendation was that we allocate $382,672 for our administration of the grants, $240,000, it goes to our debt service. And then there are two large categories, public service activities and housing and community development activities. In the public service activities, I guess I should say, of the applicants, what the city did was recommend, made recommendations to applicants whose applications did better than 80% of our, of the requirements. So if you were an applicant and your application was well below 80%, you were not recommended. If you were over 80%, you fall into the recommended categories. So I'll just be broad. In the public service activities category, recommendations were made for the Harrisburg Fair Housing. I'll have the LGBT Center, America For Sure, CEO Habitat for Humanity, Heroin, Evolve Trades Academy, the Worship Academy, Trinity Church, AJV Drug and Alcohol. And that cut, that service category, it can only go up to $287,000, and 87, and $87,004. So that's one category. And then the other category is housing and community development activities, and the recommendations went to the organizations, the Boys and Girls Club, Planned Parenthood, the program It's About Change, Salvation Army, Wild Heart Ministries, Brethren Housing, Tears for Tarena. And then Public Improvement, Public Facilities for the city, and those were $250,000, and $250,002. And housing programs, which are the programs that the city itself run to help individuals repair their homes. That's $359,066, and then $224,000 to demolition, for a total of $1,018,687. So the whole CDBG funding grant was, is a total of $1,928,363, which is a combination of, which includes about $15,000 of program revenue. During the hearings, we did find out and hear a few things from some of the applicants. So we were unaware at the time, for example, that Wild Heart Ministries was for a private residence. So we will be introducing amendments to remove that allocation. Another applicant, Planned Parenthood withdrew their application. So given that, and given that we have to maintain kind of this formula, I'll be making a recommendation for, for an amendment where we were on the, where we, on the public services side, we almost equalize the grants that applicants receive. And then on the housing and community side, we'll be removing both, recommending that Wild Heart Ministries and Salvation Army be removed since Salvation Army is receiving funds on the ESG side. And that's pretty much it during the, when the bill does come up for discussion, I would like to request that we do suspend the rules so we could discuss it further because we do have members of council who need to recuse themselves and for them to explain it, and then any other legalities that the Lobbyer would like to articulate to the audience regarding either the application process or the grants. And also, we do have to do a final check to make sure that our numbers are, are correct. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair Daniels. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Rawls on behalf of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee on the work session of February 7th, 2023. Chair Rawls?
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening to everyone again. On February 7th, 2023, the City of Harrisburg held a work session during, excuse me, during this work session, the Parks and Rec and Enrichment Department discussed Resolution 7 of 2023 and Resolution 8 of 2023. Resolution 7 of 2023 was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to accept an increased grant award in the amount of $275,000 in furtherance of its submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, also known as C2P2 Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram in order to develop Phase 2 of the Chutes and Ladders Playground and Reservoir Park. Resolution 8 of 2023 was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to award funding in the amount of $40,000 to the Capital Area Green Belt Association for the performance of maintenance on city-owned land in the Capital Area Green Belt. On behalf of the administration, Ms. Valmer gave information on both resolutions. Ms. Valmer explained that Resolution 7 of 2023 is a resolution in which the city is able to accept an increase of funds from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. The increase of funds would be in the amount of $275,000. The funds are being used to develop Phase 2 of Chutes and Ladders Playground and Reservoir Park and are mainly going to be used for the parking lot in the top, in the tot lot. Council has already passed Resolution 19 of 2022, which allowed the city to submit a grant to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the grant amount of $250,000, and Resolution 7 would be an increase of that. Resolution 8 of 2023 is a resolution approving funds for the Capital Area Green Belt Trail Maintenance and Removal of Invader Species and Debris that falls into the stream bed. The funds are also for a company to come in and handle heavy equipment that volunteers are unable to handle. Resolution 7 of 2023 will allow the continued upgrades to the Reservoir Park, and Resolution 8 of 2023 will allow the continued performance and maintenance on the city-owned land in the Capital Area Green Belt. And for both of those reasons, I recommend that my council members vote yes for both resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rawls. The final committee report that you will hear this evening will come from Chair Lawson on behalf of the Public Works Committee on the work session of February 7th, 2023. Chair Lawson?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session, February 7th, 2023, the, the Public Works Department met to discuss their fourth quarter report. Within that report, that's the, the ongoings. We went into the, the signs that were replaced or removed throughout the city. We discussed curb cuts. We also discussed work to be done with the PennDOT and State Street and the relationship with Dawood Engineering. We had questions from Councilman Majors about the effectiveness of the current fees. And we also had questions from Councilman Daniels about the homeless encampment and the progress there and the effectiveness of gates. That concludes what we have done that week.
Thank you very much. Council members, we do not have any ordinances for first reading or ordinances for amendment. We do have two ordinances for final passage. The first is Bill 1 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 1-2023, An Ordinance Appropriating Emergency Solutions Grants Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Fiscal Year 2022, and Authorizing Expenditure of Such Funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill 1 of 2023? Okay. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Just for clarity, Neil, with the ESG or the CDBG? Okay, yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill 1 of 2023 passes unanimously with a seven to zero vote.
Thank you. Next, we have Bill 3 of 2023. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Chair, Chair Daniels.
So basically, some of the updates are already mentioned during the committee report. And so the recommendation will be to amend the bill in the following ways. Under the under the public, the housing and community development activities, what would end up being recommended is just an equal allocation between Boys and Girls Club. Oh. We left Planned Parenthood in. Okay, and, and that's not there anymore. And it should, if the likes there, but okay. Okay, so Boys and Girls Club, the program, It's About Change, Brethren Housing, and Tears for Trina, they would each receive thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. And then on the public service activities side, Fair Housing Council, L H A, LGBT Center, America For Sure, CEO Habitat, Fair One, Evolve Trades Academy, The Worship Academy, Trinity Church, AJV Drug and Alcohol would all receive twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. And if folks, if you'd be, if, if you're, if you would like to hear elaboration more on some of the reasons for the recommendations.
And may I, Madam Chair, by taking out the Planned Parenthood, that number goes up if you're equalizing it.
That's, yeah.
Not, not from thirty-seven, but to?
The forty-six?
What is the number?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see the, okay, so sorry, instead of thirty-seven, one, two, three point eight, it would be to forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents.
Can you repeat, can you please repeat that number, that final number?
Forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents for the remaining housing programs, which are the Boys and Girls Club, the program, It's About Change, Brethren Housing, and Tears for Trina.
Thank you.
Folks have questions, feel free to ask.
The, the only thing I would note is that each of those applications that are being granted were requested more than those funds, so you wouldn't be exceeding the request.
I just was curious, is anyone going to discuss the status of the other two that were not funded, or are we just not?
That's, that's the council's prerogative.
Yeah, I mean, the two that were not, one was Wild Heart, and again, the issue there is it's a private residence. The second was Salvation Army, and that's a combination of, you know, the the repairs almost seem like it's a contractual breach with the contractor. They, they should be pursuing those funds from the contractor who didn't build this the service well enough, and they were also receiving money on E S G for the service. The, the money on the E S G side goes directly to rental systems or to help prevent people from missing rent or kind of going into homelessness. So we thought that was a better use of the money than than repairing the, the portion of the, the facility that they probably have legal recourse to.
And then Planned Parenthood withdrew their application completely.
Yeah, and that doesn't seem to be an explanation, they just.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to share that on the record.
Do, do folks have other questions?
Oh, yeah, one other question, I think this may be for Director Hill. Were there any other applicants in this section that met the requirements to be eligible? I know we were talking about, we, we sort of changed a little bit how, how we did it, just to ensure everyone met the federal eighty percent threshold. So were there any other applicants in addition to those who applied that weren't considered?
No.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And then the other question was already asked by, well, answered by the solicitor. No one is receiving more than the requested amount that they, that they made application for.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Neil, anything you would like to make sure get, get some direct priority?
Yeah, just, and I will note that my business is words, not numbers. However, my, I come up with a total that's two dollars less in the new one than the old one, is that correct? When they, when you do the new allocation?
Sorry, councilman, councilwoman being, has my copy. There was one that should have been a couple cents less. Which category?
I, I just took everything that was on the agenda for this, everything including the, that you got down to the, you got down to one million, eighteen thousand, eight, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars on line seventy-nine. I come up with the last two digits as eighty-five. And I'm just asking, do you know? Is that intentional? It's the minimus, but it upsets me. Okay.
Well, this year, I, I don't, they all have. Sorry, on this here, that they all have the same, it's the forty-six, four, four, seven, five.
That's correct, over four organizations.
But to get to the total, I have to add the public improvement, the housing program, and the demolition to get to the total for this category. And I'm just saying, the category, when I do my math, has two dollars less in the new number. It doesn't matter, but, you know, just.
We could add that to the housing programs. I'm sure we need paper.
Wait a second, maybe, because you have an odd number there. Nope, I put your two dollars in there, so. So we can make it sixty-eight. It's housing and community development. So that's what you just changed. You, you could do whatever you wish with it. You can, you can distribute, you can do nothing with the extra, you can distribute it.
Let's just fix it. We can just do housing programs, make that sixty-eight.
Good. Line seventy-seven. And lastly, you, Madam Chair, are you going to do this in one continuous motion for both sections, all in one motion? With each line?
You don't trust me.
No, I absolutely trust you. I just, I'm just not knowing which way we're, we're doing this. So I believe that's appropriate. You could do that, every line you want to change, do it in one motion.
Um, but maybe I don't trust myself. Hold on. Maybe I'll, I'll do. I'll do it in one. Does anyone else have any other question? I would like to move to go back in the session.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to return to our legislative session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have now resumed our legislative session. We are currently in consideration of Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it again?
Certainly. Bill three dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance appropriating community development block grant program funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chair Daniels?
So I would move to amend this bill in the following way. Line fifty-six, delete the number ten thousand and add the number twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Twenty-three thousand. Twenty-three or twenty-six? Or?
The public services?
Public services. Okay.
Don't interrupt him.
Just checking.
Okay, so line, that's, that's right, right?
Okay.
So again, fifty-six, delete ten thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line fifty-seven, delete twenty-five thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars, twenty-seven cents. Line fifty-eight, delete forty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars, twenty-seven cents. Line fifty-nine, delete twenty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty, delete twenty-five thousand, insert twenty-six thousand dollars, twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-one, delete twenty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-two, delete twenty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-three, delete forty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars, twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-four, delete nineteen thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-five, delete forty thousand, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Line sixty-six, delete twenty-eight thousand, four dollars, insert twenty-six thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. And then we'll move to line sixty-nine, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. Line seventy, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert zero dollars. Line seventy-one, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. Line seventy-two, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert zero dollars. Line seventy-three, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert zero dollars. Line seventy-four, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen, and insert forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. Line seventy-five, delete twenty-six thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars, and insert forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. Line seventy-seven, delete three hundred and fifty-nine thousand and sixty-six dollars, and insert three hundred and fifty-nine thousand and sixty-eight dollars. And that's the conclusion of the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to the amendment on the floor?
Do we need to make a final?
No, but this would be the point where if a council member needs to recuse themselves, they need to state so on the record.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself due to being a member of the board for Wild Heart Ministries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I will be taking the advice from our solicitor's office and recusing myself from participating in today's vote to the fact that I sit on the Habitat for Humanity Board of Directors, and which is an applicant for the C D B G funding.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any other additional discussion before we vote on the amendment on the floor? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call for the vote on the amendment?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson, I'm sorry, he recused himself. Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three passes unanimously with a vote of five yays to zero nays, two recusals.
Thank you. We will now, that was the amendment. We now have to vote on the amended Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three.
Neil, parliament to inquiry, would I have to, would the recusal cover the amendment and the?
Right. You're, you're recusing.
Thank you.
Okay. This is on the actual bill after amendment.
Yes, the amended Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes.
And you would need a motion in a second again.
Okay, is there a, I'll entertain a motion to accept the amended version of Bill three, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Council members, any final questions, comments, or concerns related to the amended version of Bill three of two thousand and twenty-three?
Just, just a brief comment, just want to thank Director Hill, Chair Daniels, and others on working to ensure that we're allocating the funds in a correct manner. Thank you to the applicants that did apply and look forward to being able to ensure that these funds are used to the best of the ability to help our community.
Thank you. Any additional commentary? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? I'm sorry, he recused himself. Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes, yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
The amended portion of Bill three has passed unanimously, five yays to zero nays with two recusals.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution one dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Daewoo Engineering Incorporated to provide consulting services to assist with the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application and business plan.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution one of two thousand and twenty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. The next resolution we have is Resolution two of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution two dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the city A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services, LLC, to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Two of two thousand twenty-three? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Two of two thousand twenty-three passes unanimously with seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. The next resolution we have for consideration is Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three. A resolution reappointing Mr. Dan A. Scholder Esquire to serve on the License and Tax Appeal Board.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. The next resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Six of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Six of two thousand twenty-three. A resolution reappointing Ms. Evelyn Hunt to serve on the License and Tax Appeal Board.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Six of two thousand twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Five of two thousand twenty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
That was Resolution Six.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay.
Correction, Resolution Six.
Next, we have Resolution Seven of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Seven dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to accept an increased grant award in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in furtherance of its submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources C two P two Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram to develop Phase Two of the Chutes and Ladders Playground in Reservoir Park.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Seven of two thousand twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Seven of two thousand twenty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Eight of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eight dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to award funding in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Capital Area Green Belt Association for the performance of maintenance on city-owned land in the Capital Area Green Belt.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Eight of two thousand twenty-three? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution Eight of two thousand twenty-three passes unanimously, seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Nine of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Nine dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution approving a preliminary slash final land development plan to construct a four-story mixed-used development consisting of commercial space on the first floor and approximately forty-eight apartments with associated parking on a point-seven-five acre lot located at fifteen-twenty North Sixth Street.
Thank you. Resolution Nine of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution Ten of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Ten dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution accepting an offer from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation in the total amount of four hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars for compensation and other associated payments related to the acquisition of zero-point-four-nine acres for required rights of way, zero-point-one-seven-five acres of drainage slash underground structure support easement along South Nineteenth Street and authorizing the execution of all documents required to effectuate the conveyance of such for the I- eighty-three widening project.
Thank you. Resolution Ten of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, we have Resolution Eleven of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eleven dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Clemens N. Onuk, Onuk Wu-Biri to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution Eleven of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Twelve of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. A resolution, I'm sorry, Resolution Twelve dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Dr. Kent L. Hurst, Ph.D., to serve on the Harrisburg Architectural Review Board of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, I misspoke during our caucus and noted that this would move to the Administration Committee, but it should be in the Building and Housing Committee. Next, we have Resolution Thirteen of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Ms. Danielle Moore to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution Thirteen of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Fourteen of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mr. James R. Thompson, AIA, to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution Fourteen of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Fifteen of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Boris Hines, Mr. Boris Hines, to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution Fifteen of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Sixteen of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Sixteen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to award funding in the amount of forty thousand dollars to the Capital Area Green Belt Association in the form of a local match in support of their application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Growing Greener Grant Application for the Parkway Creek Restoration Phase Three Project.
Thank you. Resolution Sixteen of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee. Our final resolution for discussion this evening is Resolution Seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Seventeen dash twenty twenty-three. A resolution appointing Mr. Daniel C. Leppo to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution Seventeen of two thousand twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? Okay, seeing none, any new business? I have a few things, just bear with me for a moment. Uh, this month is Black History Month. The national theme is resistance. Uh, Mr. Morrison's presentation was telling of black men and women in Harrisburg who are vital to our history, and we know that they did not resist in the face of adversity. May we be reminded of their tenacity this month. There are a number of events and programs celebrating Black History Month throughout the city. Uh, this weekend is the second weekend of Voices of the Eighth Chronicles Two. It will be shown on Friday, uh, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and Sunday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at Gammet Theater. The Civic Club of Harrisburg will host the Black History Month celebration entitled Harrisburg Rise Up, honoring African-American trailblazers in our community. Doors open to view art at five-thirty, and the formal program begins at six-thirty, and that's on Friday, February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, during Third and the Bird. On Sunday, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from one PM to four PM at the State Museum, Mr. Nathaniel Gaston's Writers Workshop and Life Esteem Incorporated presents Keeping the Culture Alive, celebration honoring those who preserve our history. So this month, I challenge you to spend some time, uh, exploring the Bethel Trail, the Commonwealth Monument Project, and support black businesses. The Dauphin County Library System is also offering a series of virtual and in-person events at various locations. Uh, they have their Black History Month reading challenge, which I mentioned last year. It runs the entire month, February first to the twenty-eighth, so it's not too late to catch up. Uh, prizes for readers who complete three badges through reading or activities include a free book plus entries to win a fifty-dollar gift card or one of two twenty-five-dollar gift certificates to Good Brothers Book Cafe, now located at the McCormick Riverfront Library. There's also a Black History Month reading list. All the information can be found on Dauphin County Library System's website. Uh, one final note I wanted to mention because I've been receiving inquiries from, I know many council members have, from reporters and general members of the public, business owners regarding, uh, inquiries or plans for the remaining American Rescue Plan money, funding. Um, we know that a portion was allocated, but there are funds remaining. We have not yet received anything, uh, from the mayor or her administration to take action on. So I just wanted to be clear. I think there are some, uh, rumors circulating that we are holding things up and we are not taking action on anything that we've received. That is not true. We take action on everything we receive, um, in a timely manner. So I just wanted to clarify if there was any confusion.
It, and Madam President, just for the record, the, the Law Bureau has the materials.
Okay.
We had a draft for this week. It had needed some technical changes, so we had to pull it back from introduction, but it should be here for introduction at the next legislative session.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Any other new business, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is seven thirty-two PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone, and a happy Valentine's Day.